I appreciate it. I know it's called some attention.
Well, we had the facts, we had the facts.
Oh, my.
So interesting. We did our. But you didn't.
Man, she won. Okay. Okay, just, uh, I'll call you when I get, get that money. See, I'm not going to see that well the time.
This morning, you look different than you did this morning.
Ah, yeah.
Hello, I put your name in. I put your name in the chat for you.
You did.
He was there virtually.
Thank you, man.
I said, Richard don't know how to use a chat.
I ain't said no chat. She had me muted too.
He was sitting there. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Let's go. Did you find out? Uh, I call you, Mr. Blackwood, to see how you get your certificate on the day, on the class.
I've waited until. No, I, I couldn't find.
So I was sending an email or something, print off.
That's what they said.
But when they said, they said, um, your clerk is, I said, oh, good, I know how to fix that. I said, I just called Pam. Carrot mask, great.
Right at two hours.
Oh, yeah.
They not give you a break.
No. Talk, talk.
Yeah, she talk, he talk. Tell me, good boy, if I have a business, I don't want to deal with you. Can't do nothing. You breathe wrong, boy.
Yeah.
How y'all down there?
What's up, man?
It's, uh.
Y'all tell me.
Hey.
You must have heard me earlier.
What?
I asked, were you asking your questions now, or were you just getting preliminary stuff?
Oh, no, it was something totally different. I'm trying to, I'm trying to be nice most of the time.
We, we had great hope. We had great hope.
Oh, y'all.
In what? The lives that got in the preliminaries.
I saw that. I didn't.
I think, I, I think y'all, y'all, they be talking to somebody else too.
You do.
Down there. Now, I know. Where they go direct.
Oh.
You did it right there.
He was running, told me, tell y'all hello.
Hi, where'd you see him?
I was, uh, we're not going together. He said it too. He's not the Rhode Island.
Rhode Island or New Hampshire?
Uh, Rhode Island.
Thank you.
You got some family up there. Him and Lynn can take off. Take the scene it round.
At the gym, uh.
First back.
Got from, uh, police and fire. It's a police officer, young guy.
He work at hospital.
Yeah. Calling me porky.
What are you doing?
I went every game.
Oh, basketball?
Yep.
Played a church with police and fire.
Okay.
Every, every third.
After the walk, I went down, got busted.
Oh, Lord.
Me, y'all, what days y'all play now? I need to put on the.
How's everything?
Good.
All right, let's.
Good afternoon and welcome to our first budget work session. Today is May twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, and the time is approximately four oh four. So glad to have all of you with us today. We're going to have our first budget session, and I believe our first presenter is going to be Ken Hunter, followed by, uh, Mrs. Kena Colfield Jones, our HR director. But first, uh, Mr. Manager, do you have any comments or remarks before we get started?
Uh, no, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon to everybody. Um, we have, of course, had the opportunity, you received, uh, the mayor, I'm sorry, the city manager's introduction and introductory presentation on Monday evening. Uh, we had a virtual town hall yesterday where we re-reviewed that presentation with the public and did receive some questions and provided responses to all the questions that were asked in the chat. Uh, we obviously will have a public hearing on June twelfth, and this is the first of what we have scheduled so far, two, if necessary, more sessions with you as counsel to review the fiscal year twenty twenty four proposed fiscal plan. Uh, today's, um, today's session will cover two items. First of all, we will, we will cover over the revenues, we will cover expenditures at our next meeting, but we will take some time to cover revenues. Uh, and then we will get into, uh, once I've had a chance to go over the revenues with you, then we will have a presentation, as mentioned by Ms. Colfield Jones, with respect to our classification and compensation plan recommendations, which have been incorporated in the fiscal year twenty twenty four annual operating budget. So if you'll give me just a second, so I can switch, um, platforms. So, um, what you have here, if you go to page two dash two of the budget book, and I apologize, is everybody okay if I sit, or would you like for me to stand?
Oh, man.
Thank you. Um, what you will see here is an overview and summary of revenues by type across the annual operating funds of the city. Uh, to give you an idea of kind of how, how the money is distributed. Obviously, general fund money comes from a wide variety of sources, and we'll get more into that here in a minute. Powell Bill fund money primarily comes from the state of North Carolina, either through our annual Powell Bill allocation or through the annual funds that we receive uh, for projects that we do under the congestion mitigation air quality program, uh, emergency telephone, uh, E nine one one revenues, and again, that is distributed by the state uh, through the E nine one one tax. Uh, we have not yet formally received our notice of receipt of funds for fiscal year twenty four, but we are anticipating funds in twenty four. The utility funds that are there, electric, gas, water, sewer, and stormwater, most of their revenues, of course, come from the sale of services. As we mentioned in the budget proposal, per the discussion that started last fall after we presented a cost of service analysis for water and sewer, we are recommending rate increases for water and sewer services. That's primarily to cover capital investments as well as some inflationary increases in operating costs. But there are no changes to the rates for the electric fund, the gas fund, or the stormwater fund planned for fiscal year twenty twenty four. Uh, you will also notice one line in particular, and I'll make note of this throughout the course of the next couple of minutes, interest on idle funds, uh, that has picked up significantly due, of course, to changes in the market. We've been very fortunate for that. Currently, the, the, the reported yields on our funds on both of our local government investment pools are over five percent, uh, which is dramatically improved compared to where they were a year ago, and certainly for the decade prior to that, which has been very helpful in raising revenues, uh, for the city. And there are also some areas of growth in other areas. Uh, what I can say when I explain with respect to revenues is that this is a sustainable fiscal plan in the fact that the revenues that we are projecting in terms of current revenues are consistent with growth patterns that we've seen over a significant period of time, and that we are being conservative and within lines with the estimates that we determine based on our own performance as well as guidance that's provided to us by the North Carolina League of Municipalities, particularly for those shared revenues that are technically state statute and then redistributed to municipalities and counties. So let me go ahead, um, and get to the revenue overview. Overall, in the general fund, we are requesting a budget of ninety two point nine eight five million dollars, which is an increase compared to what we adopted for current fiscal year of just over eight point nine eight million dollars. However, of this, a little over five million dollars are those current revenue increases, taxes, fees, other services that are, have trended in a positive direction from year to year. Um, when it comes to ad valorem, which, of course, are property taxes, you can see we are anticipating a small increase, about one point two percent, and that's consistent with growth. Uh, we, of course, are not in a revaluation year right now, but there is a revaluation process going on both in Nash and Edchcombe Counties, which will affect property valuations for calendar year twenty twenty four that will be applied in fiscal year twenty twenty five. So, uh, this will be a matter that we will continue to monitor. There are going to be some efforts that we take as a city to try to track what's going on. Obviously, the assessment processes are run by the counties, but we are going to do our best to be as aware of what is going on and evaluate what is going on as we have to make the necessary decisions to determine where to go with rates and other factors once those assessments are completed early, either late this calendar year or early next calendar year. We also continue to see improvements in collections from prior years, and a lot of this is due to real estate activity. Um, and we do, we are pretty confident that the nine hundred thousand dollar number will be met because that's consistent with what we're seeing this year. Uh, vehicle taxes have improved as well a little bit. We're actually going to be a little above the three, it will be around three point six million for this year, this current fiscal year, so we feel comfortable at three point six five million dollars. And the tax penalty as well, we're comfortable with at four fifty because it's consistent with current activity. So total, we're looking at ad valorem generating about thirty million, three hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars, which is about a three point five percent increase over what we adopted this current fiscal year.
The next category.
Yes, sir. I've got a question for, um, Councilman Harris and Councilman Dodger.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Um, in Mr. Rogers' letter to the mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, and members of the council, on page one four of the book, the following statement was, was made. Our current collection rate of ninety four percent would be a focus of improvement in the coming year. I gather that ninety four percent is approximately what the collection rate is for fiscal year twenty three.
From, yeah, I believe that's from twenty two, so the last completed year, so we're still in twenty three. It's ticking up, but yes.
Well, according to the financial audit, and these percentages are just for fiscal year, not from previous year's collections. And I just gonna go back not five years, but three years. In twenty one, the collection rate was ninety six point six percent. Twenty two, ninety six point one percent. And when you said our current collection rate is ninety four percent, so I, I assumed that maybe twenty three was ninety four percent. But obviously, we're trending downward, and I just want to know what happens. So, you know, you gonna say focus of improvement, but we really need to take a look at how we can get back up to ninety seven percent or so, which I think last time I reviewed, uh, was the state average.
Well, what I'll say is coming in fresh is what I've always used as a best practice has been ninety eight percent. So anything short of that, I would say, is room, room for improvement. But what I would do to, uh, address your question, since we're still within twenty three is, I will send you the, I'll send the council, uh, our current collection rate for where we're tracking this year, and then we can maybe have further conversation, uh, at that time.
But, you know, the, the statement, our current collection rate of ninety four percent really caught, caught me, and that's why I wanted to bring it up to.
Absolutely.
Uh, this meeting today.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman Harris, Councilman Dodger.
So, Ken, on the tax penalty, you need to thirty eight percent, you say that's a line. So, help me understand. So, so what, so what happens is, it's really tied to the payment, excuse me. It's really tied to the payment of prior year's taxes. So, when you pay prior year's taxes, you're really paying two, two, two different revenues. You're paying the prior tax plus whatever penalty and interest has been accrued on the prior year's taxes. So both of them would grow in concert with one another. Thank you, sir. So we, so that is the reason for the adjustment. All right, that makes sense now, thank you. Okay.
Councilman Knight.
Does the ninety four percent, um, has anything to do with the COVID, coming out of COVID?
Um, that's what I said, let me send you the current year, to the latest and greatest information we have for the current year, and then we can, and I'll, I'll provide some context for it, and then we can have a discussion from there.
Well, for fiscal year twenty, it was ninety six point eight percent. In fiscal year twenty one, ninety six point six. In fiscal year ninety six point one. So it wasn't, it's within, so COVID is, you know, started in twenty. And now, down to ninety four. That's, that's my concern.
We'll be looking out for those documents, and hopefully, we'll have those before our next, uh, session as a whole. Yeah, we should be able to send something out, hopefully, by the end of the day tomorrow. Okay, all right, and we'll, we'll have that discussion at our next collective, uh, work session. Yes, sir. We're scheduled for next Thursday. Yes, sir. Councilman Jordan.
Um, I wonder if we could look at, is that across the state, it's just us, or other ones having the same impact?
Sure. And my point in the letter that I wanted to make, and certainly, current collection rate is important for finances and what we're, you know, that we're getting the revenue in, but it also is speaking to, uh, having performance metrics for our collections and setting a goal of what we want to collect for the current year. And so that's also why that's, that's listed in there. So we'll send the document out, uh, by closing business tomorrow, and we could talk about, um, and we'll, we'll add some considerations as to what is impacting our current collections, and we can discuss that at the next work session. Thank you. Councilman Knight.
We all need, also need to see what's impacting, um, households. You know, just coming out of COVID, you know, you still have people that's unemployed, underemployed. And then we have inflation and all those things that factor in. Looking at collection rate, I know we talked about collection rate, um, not too long ago, how we had improved in our collection rate. So I'm just interested to see, you know, what you bring back.
Absolutely. And I just want to, just for, for clarity purposes, you know, the budget is built on an assumption of a collection rate, and throughout the year, it's really just about the amount of cash that you actually are collecting. So there is the, are we getting what's billed out in terms of, uh, I guess, factors that relate to that, and then the staff's ability to collect, that's kind of one thing. And then what we actually include in the budget, which is a projection based on that collection rate, is, is, is also another thing. So I just wanted to highlight that in light of, you know, the budget conversation. So we obviously are focused on both, but the budget is based on an assumption of a collection rate, and that's, that's what you have included in the document.
Okay. All right, next up is sales tax. Um, we have seen, uh, significant growth in sales tax revenues. Uh, in fiscal year twenty twenty three, we adopted a sales tax budget. Uh, and of course, we collect both in Nash and Edchcombe County, uh, so we do, and we do track them independently. We, we had budgeted twelve point five two five, as you can see, we collected by the end of twenty twenty two over twelve point two seven three. Uh, we anticipate collections, actually, for this current fiscal year to be closer to thirteen and a half million dollars from Nash County, uh, based on where our, where we're trending right now. And based on the suggested recommendations from the municipalities, we feel comfortable with a projection of fourteen point four million dollars, which, when you compare to the, to the twenty twenty three adopted, is fifteen percent. But that builds in the growth that we've already seen this year. So, so that's the adjustment. On the Edchcombe side, you can see that we're having to be a little more conservative in those estimates. We, uh, we currently think we will get close to around four point eight million dollars in the current fiscal year, which is a little lower. There, this is, this is due to a couple of factors, I would say. One of them being, again, the challenges we run into with the Department of Revenue when it comes to refund activity, because there's no real consistency in the application of refund activity, uh, and how it affects the revenues that we received. And we did take some refunds on the Edchcombe side, we took some on the Nash side, but we took some more significant ones on the Edchcombe side this year. And that is leading us to be more conservative on the Edchcombe side. We are not saying that there will not be growth on the Edchcombe side, but we felt that it was necessary to be responsible in making sure that we hit these targets for fiscal year twenty twenty four. There's a slight increase expected with the electricity sales tax. Uh, so total sales tax overall is now twenty three point one five million, which is two million dollars, or nine point five percent more than what we budgeted for fiscal year twenty twenty three.
Ken, with, uh, you got a couple of questions. Back, can we, I know Carolina Gateway's partnership, looking at the expected growth that we're looking to see, uh, out of Kingsborough and abroad, and then looking at the loss we took with QVC. Uh, how does that affect us as we're looking at these projections, uh, moving forward?
It, it, with respect to those, when it comes to direct revenue, it's not as significant because those properties are not located currently inside the city limits. Now, when it comes to potential residential growth, when it comes to potential ancillary growth, uh, that would be expected with those opportunities, there's obviously great opportunity there to see growth in Edchcombe County, both for the benefit of the county and certainly for the benefit of the city. Um, what we have, of course, also to monitor, and of course, we saw it with employment information on the Edchcombe, in Edchcombe County, was there was a drop in employment as a result of the closing of QVC, QVC, following the fire. Um, and that, that obviously has an impact as well. We are also aware, unfortunately, of business closings that have occurred on the eastern side of Rocky Mount, uh, that have an effect as well. Um, these are obviously the reasons why groups like Carolina's Gateway Partnership, the work Alan Matthews does at the Chamber of Commerce, and that's the work that we do for the Office of Downtown Development are all important in continuing to foster growth throughout the city, and especially in Edchcombe County, both inside city limits and outside city limits. Uh, we do have at least a couple of businesses that are starting on the Edchcombe side. We have one, uh, one restaurant that is under construction currently at crossing at sixty four. We also have some other projects that are, that have been discussed. So the more opportunity that we can foster in those areas, that will definitely improve these numbers. Um, and certainly also improve, and more importantly, improve the lives of the residents who live in the neighborhoods and in the communities throughout, throughout these areas of the city.
Councilman Jordan.
Um, in our public, uh, Ken, thank you, City Manager. Uh, you know, I've been looking at for a long time the historical impact upon Edge County, Nash County, and seeing, looking at that historical process and looking at how that process impact where we are now, and what we can do as a city to try to balance that historical impact. Uh, would be, uh, I know in war three, when I look at Wooten Bog Factory, and when I look at the devastation of things that wasn't managed, uh, thirty, forty years ago by the city in the Edchcombe County side of Rocky Mount, and looking at that impact now, how we struggle to get this area to grow. I would love to be clear about what that historical impact did, and how it's, how it's impacting us today.
Yes, sir. So we also have some additional intergovernmental revenues that you see here. Um, most of them are pretty much remaining the same. There are a few items of note. The increase for Nash Rocky Mount schools, that is tied to the agreement, I believe, that y'all entered into earlier this year for the increase in the provision of school resource officers. We are reimbursed for that expense. This is a conservative estimate for what that, for what that reimbursement will be. Um, there is also, uh, the increase in ABC revenues, and that comes from both at Nash County and Edchcombe County. Um, that can be attributed to a whole bunch of things. So twenty eight percent increase. Well, and that's tied to what we're actually seeing, uh, what we actually see. If you can see, we were at four oh three last year. So, so, and that, the challenge with some of these revenues is they don't report them until way at the end of the fiscal year. So we, we kind of, we kind of get delayed in our estimations. So we obviously don't want to, we don't want to overshoot too badly. So, so that four, that four, four twenty five is more reflection exactly of what, what we saw in twenty two. Um, so that as a result, we did see an increase of about eight point three percent in this category. Um, and, and, you know, you'll see that last line, FEMA reimbursements, those are done by amendment. We do not budget as part of the budget FEMA reimbursements, that only occurs when we have a public assistance request. That sixty seven thousand was our ability to collect some reimbursement for some direct expenses incurred during COVID, uh, which we did, we requested a lot more, but that's what we got. When it comes to licenses and permits, um, you see there the motor vehicle permit fee. We have seen some growth over our original estimate of one million dollars, so we're projecting one million, one hundred thousand. Uh, currently, eighty percent of this money is set aside for surface transportation improvements. So that is, when you see the budget from an expenditure side, eighty percent goes in surface transportation to supplement the additional money we receive from Powell Bill. Um, the other revenues that we are seeing, when you come to, we are seeing some growth in planning and inspection revenues as well due to increased construction activity. Uh, we also have seen some increases associated that with fire permits and engineering permits. Uh, so overall, that revenue increased a little bit to one million, nine hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred dollars, uh, which was an increase, it's a small increase, but it's fourteen percent compared to the, to the adopted for the current fiscal year, just over one million, six hundred and ninety five thousand. In sales and ser, I'm sorry.
Uh, just, uh, for information purposes only, the cost for an inspection, are we going up on fees or anything, or we keeping those charges the same?
As of right now, we are keeping them the same for this budget. I will say that we are evaluating our fee structures currently. We have not changed our fees, I believe, in at least fifteen years, if I am correct. Uh, it's been about fifteen years since we changed our fee structures. Uh, and so we are currently reviewing what those fees are, where other jurisdictions are, what makes sense for us. And more than likely, in the coming months, uh, there may be a time where we come with a proposal to adjust those fees, and will be done so in a way to remain competitive and appropriate with respect to the, the burden applied to the developer, builder, remodeler, but also with respect to our cost of providing those services.
And maybe we can improve on how we provide those services too.
Absolutely. I was going to jump in and say, before we bring any fee increases, we will assess our ease of service.
Yes.
Thank you.
That, that too, absolutely. From the standpoint of sales and services, the, the, the largest share in this area is our solid waste operations, and you can see there are increases here, not just reflective, obviously, to, uh, the rate adjustments we make for the transfer station, which are year to year and reflect the inflationary increase we have for, for our disposal contract. But because of some residential growth, we've increased the number of our residential customers, so there's some growth there. Uh, you see it also in recycling, you even see it some in our commercial dumpster service, uh, which, uh, is, has started. You even see it some in our commercial dumpster service, uh, which, uh, is, has started to show some pickup that had not been seen in, in, in the past. Uh, we also, of course, have weed control, parks and recreation, sports complex. There, the other items are, are pretty minimal. But the total budget, and again, this is primarily due to the increases you saw for environmental services, goes up to just a little over eleven million, seven hundred thousand dollars, which is a seven four percent increase compared to the adopted for the current fiscal year. We also separated out for review the revenues generated by the Rocky Mount Event Center. Uh, as you can see, event revenues, which are for tournaments, concerts, corporate events, and concession and other activity. We budgeted this year one, one million five hundred sixty six thousand dollars. Based on the last estimate that I received, we should exceed that, uh, this year. And we are being responsible with an estimation of one million six hundred and eighty thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty four, which is a seven point two percent increase. We are also seeing increase in increased participation at the Family Entertainment Center, significant increase in parking revenue. Uh, that is a pretty solid number, as well as increased sponsorship activity as well. So, we are able to present that we anticipate the event center generating over two point three million dollars in revenue, which will help us to continue to make the efforts that we did, of course, when we originally approved this project of achieving a positive operating position in terms of its operating revenues compared to expenses, hopefully, in fiscal year twenty twenty six. So, so that's where we are. We, we are able to continue to shrink that operating subsidy, uh, from year to year, uh, and we remain committed to that.
While still emphasizing that we recognize that the evaluation of the success is not solely dependent upon revenues that come directly back to City Hall.
Yes, sir.
That's a market impact net sum.
Yes, sir.
But we, when we designed it, we always designed it to break even, we knew it would take five or six years to do so.
Right.
But the full impact is seen in the open marketplace with our key stakeholders.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem. Two questions, one, going back to the sales and services category. But, server questions there. Weed control, you know, we learned, or I learned in COW back last fall, that we have over three million dollars in uncollected fines. And they were not being collected or worked at all. First question is, how do we treat that asset on our general balance sheet? Two, are we making any efforts now to collect any unpaid fines? And in what category would that show up?
So, what I would like to do, if with your permission, is that we can prepare a statement that will go over this, as well as all other items that we have that are of, of uncollected nature, and explain those in, in, in full. What I will say with respect to this item for weed control, this is a cash basis situation, so these funds are collected.
But thi- this is just for weed control, is that grass cutting and all that?
That is correct.
But, but fines assessed against property for other purposes, there's no revenue category?
We treat everything on a cash basis, so we don't accrue that revenue. It is still a receivable. But, and we are in the process right now of going through that to, to determine, to determine the amounts, as well as to determine what is collectible and what is not collectible under state law. And we are happy to provide you with information that provides further detail on that to your question.
I would appreciate that, and if we had to write it off, what would, how would that impact? Your statement.
To the best, to our best ability, the way it will reflect it is that while currently in our balance sheet, there is a receivable, but there is also an allowance and liability on that receivable. So, it should negate itself in most cases. So, it will not affect fund balance, it will not affect the amount of money that we actually have. That's a practice that we use, so that we acknowledge that there's a receivable, even though we're doing this on a cash basis, so we're not accruing it, so that we have to write it off budgetarily. But that we have an allowance in place on our liability side to be able to offset it when it becomes uncollectible.
Uh, uh, when, when you provide additional information, could you help me to see where that is mentioned in our last audited report?
Yes, sir.
I have gone through there, it's probably staring me right in the face, but I can't find it.
Yes, sir, understood.
And then, uh, it would be a wonderful celebration in twenty twenty six, maybe before, that we have a, uh, operation expenses are covered by operating income, as you said, uh, state.
I'm happy to report that we actually achieved that based on the numbers for March of twenty twenty three.
Yeah, but April and May and June might, might be different.
Yeah.
But, do you have something that you can share with maybe new members of the council? Since I wasn't known when the, uh, event center was built, on how this is going to be achieved?
We can, yes.
Thank you.
And Ken, one thing, I, I pray we have some consistency in our collections, because there, I have a one scenario of a constituent, constituent that is, uh, I know we have new management now, and this could be something older, but she's ninety six years old and still receiving a letter about a nine hundred dollar fine for a property that was burned down, and the house is now in distress, dire distress. And so, I know we're not doing that citywide. And so, I just ask that we have a consistency in that, in the collection, because, uh, this is a situation where, you know, she's ninety six, and I know there are some other homes that aren't receiving the same uh, sort of, uh, aggressive approach for the collections. And I just ask that we have a consistency as we move forward, uh, in this process.
And I just, I, I wanted to log into something similar with, uh, Mayor Protem is stating. Uh, when you look at these collection rates, you know, staff can only work against whatever priorities that have been set to administer them. And, um, as I stated, when I came here twenty some years ago, there was never any conversation about foreclosure at collections. And I just believe, especially around property, um, enhancements, um, it just rolled and rolled and rolled and rolled. And so, this is the first discussion in over twenty years that we've had a conversation related to foreclosing properties, related to, um, collections, which I'm not saying are not appropriate. I'm just saying, it's never been previous administration priorities. The collections were, for the most part, centered around tax and utilities, because those were the big revenue generators for the city of Rocky Mount. And, um, my entire point of view is that, yes, if people owe things, they need to pay. But we can't just come out and say, oh, you owe X dump, you, you never paid for twenty years, and now it's time to pay it all, or you lose. And this is, this creates stress and consternation and instability in, um, marginalized communities. And I'm not saying it's inappropriate, I do not feel that way. I feel that how we approach it, if we just say, drop the hammer, you owe something, you don't pay it, we take what you have. That heats up instability in fragile and marginalized communities. And what I am saying is while we're evaluating whatever we need to do to, um, do, do the right thing, we're just trying to do the right thing, I think, is let's also consider the fact that you still live in a city that continues to have some of the highest unemployment rates in North Carolina. You still have some of the poorest people in the state of North Carolina. And you still have, um, unemployment rates that are, that impact. And, and, and what we're trying to do is change that narrative, that formula. It's been that way for a long time. I'm not saying be comfortable with it, because everything I commit my life to is to change that narrative. But I am saying that I don't feel that we should just go in and heat up our real estate markets by taking older, poor people's property, because they didn't pay a fine or a fee, and put it out here in the open market, just to say the bottom line is now better. It's more than one way to evaluate a budget.
But that's not the point of what I was asking.
I know it's not, uh, I know it's not.
I'm glad to hear that we have an allowance for doubtful accounts, yeah. And, and that's, hopefully, is in, increased monthly, or however the budget is. Because if we didn't, then, then we could have a serious impact on our operations, but.
Oh, let's see, that, as we look at that, I know that in my area, slum landlords, when their, when their properties come under code violations, I know they have switched those properties. And those properties go, now you got another year that, that person can keep that property without any impact. We have to look at what, what, what is the impact when you've got whole blocks that you've got people doing that with. And, and the punishment come to the renters that stay in that property. And also, a lot of those properties have been section eight property, that, that those persons are getting a flat rate and then charging those people a rate above that. And, and we got some people that have stayed in homes so long that the rent they have paid over time, have paid for that property over twenty times.
And that's why I think, uh, to Mr. Hunter's point, I think what would be most appropriate, number one, is I think it is appropriate for the budget discussion to, to have a, uh, provide counsel to information about how certain things appear on our financial balance sheet. I think that's relevant, but I think some of these other, uh, issues that you bring up are really uh, philosophical related to how we do collections. I'll give another example, uh, environmental citations, that's philosophy. Do we wait two weeks for you to remediate, or do we immediately abate and send you a bill? And so, we probably should have that conversation about our philosophy on our types of collection and assessments, uh, maybe at a committee of the whole going forward. But related to the budget, I think we wanna, uh, Mr. Hunter has committed to make sure to, uh, uh, illuminate and enumerate how these certain fees appear on our balance sheet. But related to the projections, these are our projections based on historical data and what we're seeing in terms of trends. So, the, the projections are solid, but I think it's worth revisiting, especially while I'm new and learning uh, the, the previous philosophies on how certain things are done, to take that up at a committee of a whole, so that we can make sure staff has proper direction on how to, to engage.
And previous doesn't mean that needs to stay that way, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying, it's a reason why balances have been run up and why things haven't been done.
Absolutely.
You know, so now the question is, what do we do going forward? All I ask for is balance and judicious, um, behavior. It's sort of like when, during COVID, you talked about, um, those collections, and we thought we were gonna lose everything. But you had, um, a insightful and a proactive and a thoughtful collections department that worked with people. And that said, okay, this is what you owe, let's work with you, and we got what we needed to get. You know, so I don't see why this should be any different, you know, we need to get what we need to get, but we work with people thoughtfully, that's all I request.
Councilman Dr. Johnson, Councilman Knight.
Well, I, I agree with what everyone said regarding this and including with management, we need to get back to the budget, but, uh, it is an important thing, because also, the code, what we're talking about is code enforcement in, in collection of those code enforcement, because that, that brings, it's, it's not fair for, for Tom to keep his property up and for me to not, you know, to keep my property up or do anything. And, um, so, we need to look at that, but I would extend it also to commercial. We get to that, and hopefully, that would be the only item on our agenda that could be at the hall to just talk about this one subject.
It's gonna take some time.
So, I agree with you, we need to look at the budget and keep on striking.
Councilman Knight.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, we're talking about, uh, uh, collection rate and collection. I was being collected, and I sort of recollect, it wasn't until about two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, when we really got a, um, uh, collection department that actually uh, started to look at practices and procedures in collecting. And this was old debt, and the stuff that had been on for years and years and years. And so, when, uh, what's, I forget the young lady's name, this over. Natasha, yeah, came to us with some presentation about, you know, our collection rate. I was surprised that it was this high. You know, and you mentioned about, you know, we enforce on a little man, but then you have all these businesses with this property that's been sitting there that we don't try to collect from, where I actually try to collect from. But who's gonna collect from, from, from those people? And so, you know, I think we need to look at it, not only just the individual, but look at some of these businesses and corporations.
Councilman, you're hitting nail on the head, I'm an ex-banker. If I know somebody's got degrees, I'm gonna go try to get it.
You sound like the IRS.
If a business can afford to pay a past due, that's where we need to make our efforts, regardless. If an individual can afford to pay, and we know those individuals.
Right.
We need to go after the individual.
And then you have people too, you talk about grass and weeds, that refuse to pay stormwater that live out on the reservoir. I know they can pay, but we ain't talking about that, so what I'm saying is.
That's the whole thing about code, I guess.
Right, but, but what I'm saying, even though they're living on water, I'm saying, why I gotta pay stormwater when it runs off into the river, the reservoir? And when you talk about the historical piece, we really can't talk about the budget until we bring it into context about equity around the budget and the historical piece. And when you look at the Edgecombe side and the tax rate, the unemployment, health disparities, all those things that impacts people income. You know, like my mom said, you can't get blood out of a turnip. Some of us want the collection of property to get blood out of a turnip. But then you got the person that got the, the whole garden turnips ain't paying flip. So, I wanna talk about that too, because I think, you know, it all's, you know, work hand in hand. You know, we advocate, which I do, you know, for the lease of those. And I think when we get to that point, is to, to work out payment arrangements, like we've been saying. If you got something that's on a book that's twenty, fifteen, twenty years, and it's out of statute, how you gonna go back and ask that person to pay for it, but then you writing this other stuff off, so.
So now we can continue, if you're okay. We can continue to something a little more positive. And I don't mean that, I don't mean that with any disrespect to what we're talking about. And that's the interest on idle funds, and as you can see, we're doing very well. Um, we actually feel that this year, we're actually gonna come in close to nine hundred thousand dollars in interest in the general fund. Uh, we've made, of course, some adjustments, and this is with non-active management. Uh, we're just not in a position to sit there and try to trade actively, so we work through investment pools. You approve the NC class one, we still have a relationship with Capital Management Trust. One million dollars to us is a fair, based on attended an economic forecast today that was provided by Dr. Connet at UNC Charlotte, and it's pretty consistent that, that the rates on federal treasuries and corporate debt, the short-term debt that we maintain, and we keep it short-term, because it allows it to be the mo-, it's the most appropriate, uh, that those interest rates should not change significantly for the foreseeable future, that, that we should be in good, we should be in good shape. Miscellaneous, uh, this includes the rents for, uh, parks and recreation facilities. We have seen an improvement in rental activity across, across our facilities, as well as at the sports complex. And also, a little bit of additional in building leases, as well as continuation of our CATV contribution. Uh, keeping, uh, demolition assessments, again, that's another area that this is what we assess, and that is a cash item. So, obviously, that does not, booking of assessments, that's actual receipt of assessments. As well as something that we thought was gonna go away, but is still there, and that's the excess utility tax, which is on pipe natural gas. That they still collect that, and we still get a share of that. When it comes to transfers in, you will see, uh, utility transfers actually go down from three million dollars to two million, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the current fiscal year. Uh, we still continue our two hundred and fifty thousand dollar annual transfer from the occupancy tax, and we'll continue to work to find ways to get that back to the appropriate level, which would be five hundred thousand dollars, uh, in accordance. uh, in accordance with our agreement with Nash County. Uh, you will note that we did transfer in this current fiscal year, ten million dollars from ARPA. That's the money that we were able to account for as revenue recovery, which we will use for specified purposes, but it's now available in the general fund for no specified purposes.
So we have pulled it down.
Yes, we have, yes. No, we, we've received all the money and it's been pulled down and they can't get it back, so.
That's the point I was, that's what I was concerned about.
So, so, yeah, yeah. I, no, trust me, I, I, I've seen the emails, so it's, uh, we're, we're, we're making sure about that. Lease proceeds, um, we are anticipating several projects, uh, at around six point one three. Most of that being equipment and that's pretty close to what we financed this, what we originally planned for financing this year at five point nine six seven. With fund balance appropriated, we maintained the unassigned fund balance appropriated at three point seven million dollars. Uh, we talked about in the budget message about the use of three point five million dollars from that ten million dollars of American Rescue Plan for specific projects, and that's the assigned fund balance amount. For the general fund, that gets you to a total, of course, as I said before, of nine, of ninety-two million nine hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. At this point, uh, I will just let you know that I have about fifteen minutes until I need to leave because my daughter's getting an award at, at her school academic reception.
Very good.
So I wanna make sure that, that I make sure that I'm there for that. Um, and also since you had the opportunity to discuss classification compensation, uh, but the rest of these funds are, are pretty self-explanatory. Powell bill, uh, we've kept that allocation the same as it is this year. And again, this is just a challenge because of where it's coming from and how it's distributed. Again, it's dependent upon gas tax revenues. And it's also a pro rata dis- distribution with the rest of the state, which poses some challenges, uh, with respect to this allocation. Um, and the seven hundred and twenty thousand, that is C Mac, a little more in interest. And then we are using some fund balance to be able to balance it out, uh, for the coming fiscal year. Emergency nine-one-one, it's the, the anticipated appropriation, which may be more than that. Uh, but when we don't spend that money, we do use it to build up a balance for improvements. And one of those improvements right now that we are using some funds in our fund balance for the fact that we are doing a major renovations to our telecommunications PSAP center here at the police department. That's, that's going along smoothly. In the electric fund, you will notice that revenues are up. Uh, that is due to some increase in revenue activity, both from residential customers as well as some new business customers. We have one, uh, particular new commercial customer, uh, that's become one of our highest users. That is a crypto mining facility that is located off of Winstead Ave, off of, I'm sorry, Wesleyan Boulevard. And they use a more advanced technology, which keeps their noise levels down. That's of course the challenge that some crypto mining operations have in other parts of the country where they're air-cooled units and they sound like jet engines twenty-four hours a day. This is not one of those types of operations. Uh, and because crypto, crypto, crypto values have gone up, he has continued to expand upon his operation. And we've been able to do that. We've been able to provide him with the electricity he needs without considerable investment on our end trying to provide the electricity because he's located pretty close to the North Point of Delivery Station. Um, with respect to the gas fund, um, gas, as you know, is a moving target because of commodity prices, uh, that we continue to work with. Um, and so we kept the utility sales at its current level, at its original budgeted level of twenty-three point two seven five. Um, we are trying to look at this. We are not making any recommendations with respect to the proposed rates, as they were published. Uh, but depending, of course, upon the price for natural gas, there may be needs to work with the purchase cap, purchase gas adjustment rate like we are currently doing to ensure that we meet our necessary operating margins. We do have some flexibility with rate stabilization, but we have to make sure that we are, uh, collecting in a fashion consistent with what we are paying for both the, for both the commodity itself as well as for the transportation cost. Our gas department has done considerable work over the last couple of years to try to minimize potential spikes that could occur as a result of market conditions.
Yes, sir. So, question, so the interest on these idle funds, do they balance back to this big one or this is in addition to?
No, this is in addition to because we, the money is bucketed, but then it's reg, and then it's distributed by fund. So, so it's, 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 we, this is for each fund. These, this, so when you see this, this is the revenues for that specific fund.
So we can, we can add the million dollars plus the four twenty plus the whatever, whatever.
That's correct.
That lets us know what our net total is.
Yeah, if you go back.
The management.
Yeah, I'll go back to page two. We're looking at total interest on idle funds of about three point five eight million dollars.
I think that is a good story.
Which we're, we, we, we try to maintain. Normally, we can maintain up to about a hundred to a hundred and ten million dollars in idle fund management. Sometimes that course goes down depending on revenues, you know, don't always time with expenditures. But at our peaks, we can sometimes have up to a hundred and ten million dollars available for investment. And of course, all of this is one day turnaround, so we, when we need it, we have it. When we don't need it, we can have it sent, so we're, we're in good shape in those.
No expenses logged against it other than the management?
That's correct, and those fees are pretty minimal. Uh, that was, that was, and we're still enjoying, uh, I think basically a fee holiday with NC class at this point. Um, on the water side, you will see that that revenue has gone up. We did see some increase in sales this year and that revenue does reflect the rate increase that we have recommended. Uh, you will see there are some other revenues that are tied to various assessments and other programs that the water fund operates. Uh, we are anticipating the need for three point eight million dollars in fund balance and that is for specific projects. Namely, the biggest ones have to do with NC DOT improvement projects where we're responsible for expansions, realignments and other aspects to our water system infrastructure, the most notable of which is Sunset Ave, is the Sunset Avenue work occurring with the I ninety-five interchange as well as the work along Old Carriage Road. So those are, uh, projects that, that, and, and the challenge with that is we budget for it, but we don't pay it until we get the bill from NC DOT. So, you know, it's kind of a timing matter with that.
Mr. Manager, um, due to the increases we talked about in the, um, the rates for some of these, and I'm sure the residents are calling in on that. And we had the presentation, it was a couple of months ago.
Yes.
If we could probably put that somewhere prominent on our website or at least maybe a summary of why to explain why the, the increases and it was very fun, maybe even where the rates are, I, I don't know how to put it, but I think it would be helpful so people can understand and instead of people assume.
Absolutely.
We didn't wanna do that while the budget was still proposed, but we can go ahead and prepare that and, and make sure that that's live and we'll also do, uh, bill, billing inserts.
If you could maybe send a copy to each one of us so when we receive a call or an email, we can properly explain it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
The FAQ, so we explain it right.
We understand. Similar with sewer, um, uh, and, you know, wanna, of course, to point out, you know, the continued, uh, success we have with the Leach Eight program, uh, which, you know, is basically not exactly free money, but close to it and that we, we get the money. We, this is, of course, the service we provide to Republic, uh, for disposal of their landfill drainage. Uh, additionally, money from surcharges, that has gone down a little bit, which is an indication that our customers, that particularly our industrial customers are doing what they're supposed to do in managing and pre-treating uh, their, 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 uh, their wastewater. Um, so we feel pretty confident with that and obviously, uh, the rate adjustment is necessary. On the stormwater side, uh, you'll see we have some increase of revenues at the current rate. Uh, and then there is some use of fund balance, but the fund balance is there and it is available for this as well as other projects. Um, we obviously have several cap, major capital projects, including the downtown drainage project. The downtown drainage project itself specifically is not in the budget because we're still waiting on the primary source of funding for that, which will be a federal grant. So we're hoping to hear any day now on the status of that grant. Uh, it has been well presented by the state, but it's still trying to get through FEMA and EPA approval.
The, the.
Yes.
The difference with the federal grant and estimated cost, is that, is that in this section?
No, sir.
So, how are we gonna treat the difference?
That is something that once we know what the final award for the grant is, then we will have to put together a plan. Our hope is that we receive what we have asked for in terms of the, in terms of the grant funding, which would basically be a ninety-ten, ninety percent grant, ten percent match. We have the fund balance available in the stormwater fund to cover that ten percent match. Once we receive final notification, then we will have to look at what the design and the actual project is to determine what we can do within our available resources. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Um, the stormwater, uh, we still have a lot of people that do not understand that stormwater. Some way we could put something on that we're excited about that and, uh, I know people who are behind on those bills who for some reason don't think they're enforceable bills.
We can certainly, we can certainly work with that and certainly be, be happy to. The remaining revenues are for our trust fund, also known historically as the canteen fund. These are for items that are not city-specific items. This, this is not involving taxes or city fees, but monies that are managed by the city for various purposes. Um, and that is a, a matter that we do appropriate as part of the budget ordinance, but is not considered part of the annual operating budget. Uh, the risk management insurance fund, which is the internal service fund that we use for our health insurance program. Uh, premiums are paid by the funds as well as by our employees. The money goes into this pool to pay claims and the management of that fund. Uh, we were able, uh, to do this without any increase to the base premium. We did make some adjustments to the incentive premium rates, but we, uh, did not, we actually in fact reduced some of the dependent premium levels for fiscal year twenty-four. We were able to do that. Um, and, uh, you of course approved the contract with Etna for continuation of those, of our man, of the management services. Um, and then lastly, we have, uh, the communications fund, which again is paid for by the departments for our radio and telephone operations. Uh, that is managed by Technology Services, uh, but it is treated as a separate fund for, 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 for purposes of billing. And again, the reason why these are not included in that annual operating budget number is that we don't wanna duplicate money. We don't wanna buff up the budget when we're counting money twice, so, so that's why they're, they're treated separately. That concludes the, uh, section of the budget that we planned to go over this evening. Uh, are there any questions specific related to this section of the budget? Any further questions?
I know on the expense side, we, we have an increase on our, um, transfer, which is why we have the increase of two and a half percent. Did we increase, did we take, uh, revenue or to charge, um, by the same amount that they charged us?
There was, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, um, I will talk with Brenton and find out. I know that there was some renegotiation that occurred in the last contract, but I do not know it off the top of my head and I don't wanna answer, well, Brenton is here. Uh, if, if Chief to Keith, are you okay if, yeah, Brenton?
If you know the answer, can you repeat the question?
So, yeah, Mr. Dr. Do you don't mind?
They, they increased our, our rate that we, um, they charged us for transferring our waste to the, uh, Hertie County land site, but I guess two and a half percent. So did we go up two and a half percent on letting them, um, dispose of the leachate here in City Rock Mountain for us to treat it?
So we have a five-year agreement with them and when we renewed that five-year agreement, we did go up um, from five cents per gallon to six cents a gallon.
Maybe, maybe in five years, we can renegotiate and say every time you go up with us, we'll do it accordingly with you.
We were able to get twenty percent, so.
Well, that's good. I, I just, listen, you know.
Um, but that, that concludes, were there any other questions?
Thank you, Ken.
All right, thank you. Thank y'all very much.
Enjoy the awards.
Thank you.
Ken, thank you so much for your presentation and for, uh, taking time. And we pray that you have safe travels and wish your daughter the best wishes.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Next up, we have Ms. Kena Kofield Jones to present with us from HR. She's our HR director. And we yield to you at this time.
I was looking for him and he was a.
Do you all need a break? You're good.
No, we good. We good.
So I'll ask you that question. Uh, good evening, everyone. So this is, uh, the presentation on the class and comp study. I was tasked with in this fiscal year to have a study completed that I am happy to report that it is completed. This is my, um, five-year study. So this study began last fall and it will be closed and with the, uh, FY twenty-four. So what is a class and comp study? So it is to look at market and internal structure alignment, how we are currently aligned and what that alignment should look like. The relationship between the pay and the positions and then the current labor market. Also to simplify the classification structure, identify career progression and review minimum qualifications. A class and comp study is not to focus on individual persons or employees to move them up, down, whatever the case may be. So I just wanted to, uh, make that clear. Um, the purpose of the study, we, we contracted with Evergreen Solutions out of Florida. And so the purpose of the study was to review and compare our employment market to determine competitiveness, um, to obtain information and feedback from employees on their perception of the city as an employer and also to review all of our job classifications, uh, to ensure that those, the classification and the descriptions reflect actually the current work that is being done. Some of our job descriptions date back to two thousand eight, so some of them were, are outdated. Uh, the employee feedback, the things that they liked and would like to have continue are annual pay increases. Uh, they felt like the city offered job stability and also growth opportunities with the career ladder opportunities, um, that exist within the city. Some areas of improvement from the employees are more competitive pay, more affordable health insurance and more career ladders. So that was the result, the direct, um, feedback from those sessions. So the notable findings from the consultant is that the city has one structurally sound compensation plan. Uh, approximately ten percent of our classifications requ- required reclassification, uh, either for market or internal equity reasons. And our position in the market, we're slightly above the market average at the minimum of our pay ranges. We are at market, um, at the average midpoint and slightly below average at the maximum, our current situation. Uh, some job families, public safety and energy resources are in different and very competitive markets currently and you all are aware of that and we've made adjustments there. Or especially with the police that we just made. Councilor Harris?
Uh, explain market. Is this just a state of North Carolina comparable cities or, or a southeast? Or help me to better understand what the market.
So the market is, we looked at, North Carolina was one market. We looked at industries that are specific to us. We looked at other utility, uh, governments that offer, that has their own gas utilities. And then we also looked nationally. All right, so the highlights of the recommendations, we are going to, um, well, let me go through this.
I have a question.
Yes.
Back to your landslide, you were saying about the public safety. Uh, there was only, you said some job families, specifically public safety and engineer resource, energy resources, excuse me, are, uh, so what are the departments that's those? Police, fire and energy resources, correct, that we're classifying in this?
Here, public safety refers to police.
And not fire?
No.
Okay.
All right, so the, um, recommendations are to move or change from one pay plan to three. And those are, well, I'll get to that on the next slide, but it's, uh, the general pay plan, public safety, which is police and fire, and then energy resources. Increase the minimum of the, our lowest range from fifteen dollars to sixteen eighty-three an hour. That is for the living wage of North Carolina and that's based on a twenty-eighty hour equivalency. We, and the recommendation, it is to move the employees that are below minimum to the new minimum. And so that is where approximately. And so, that is where approximately four hundred and sixteen employees would move overall to the new minimum. And then out of that eighty-three would move to that living wage minimum. Job descriptions for every position with the FLSA designations, forty-two positions recommended for reclassification. Ten positions added to the career ladder opportunities. And then also to develop a hiring grid with an implementation methodology. So, that when new hires come into the city, that we're not creating or further creating compression. Because now this new person makes more than someone that's more tenured.
Can, can I, may I ask a question about that too? So, while you are realigning, maybe appropriately aligning, competitive pay with what standards are across the markets that we compete in. Are you at the same time looking at processes about how to better evaluate people? Performance management, metrics of evaluation? So, we take the subjectiveness out of how much a person makes, you know? So, as much as possible, I mean, we're all human and we all, you know, have those biases, but are we, are we working on that part too?
Yes, the performance evaluation or performance management would be part two. That is not included in the class and comp study. However, we do recognize that we need to perhaps revamp our performance evaluations, our performance management system. And so, we will, we've had conversations with the city manager, so that is on our list.
Thank you.
Part two, sir.
Okay, alright, stay focused.
Alright, so here are the recommended pay plans, the three pay pay plans. You'll see the general pay plan, energy resources and public safety. Breaking out energy resources and public safety allows for us to be more competitive in the market and also to be flexible. For instance, in energy resources, the lineman, if the, we had seven crews, if I'm not mistaken, and got down to two or three because of where we were in the market and they were leaving, going to other places, paying more, et cetera. In that particular instance, breaking it out to have its own will allow us to be more flexible. So, we can adjust that as needed based on the market. If it were to stay in the general plan, so say, let's just take this for example. In here, the lowest range two oh one at thirty-seven four. And if that person was, or that position was included here and the market is what it is today and we needed to increase that particular line of work by twenty percent. Then that would impact this entire plan because there's more than just that one position in that line. Can you understand that was that? Alright, so that, that, so those three pay plans are recommended, what would be on the table? And so, the benefits of the plan, one is to raise the minimum hourly rate, rate from fifteen to sixteen eighty-three, which is the North Carolina living wage. We would have more competitive pay grades. We would have updated job descriptions for every position in the city, adding the ten classifications to the career ladder options. Incorporating the three pay plans and the pay plans in general. For instance, in the general pay plan, that was increased based on the market. So, all of those are in line with the market and then an ongoing review of the structure. And I might add that what the consultant found and which I'm sure employees probably weren't necessarily aware that we in most instances were above the market. So, our current pay plan was not bad. So, we're not as, what's my word? Negatively positioned in the market as some people may have thought. Did that go over good? Alright, so the internal review process is that once this is implemented on, for the next fiscal year, the actual effective date would be July seventh, is to have one year of a stabilization period because you need to let a new plan work and before any changes are made. And then we would conduct cursory small-scale market reviews annually based on a particular position or what we're seeing within the city. And then reassignment of pay grades to compensate for considerable market movement. We'll be able to look at that as well. And then a comprehensive market review as we just completed should be done every three to five years. Now, the next steps would be this, the city manager has in his budget, the dollars, the funding to support these recommendations, which would go up for approval on June twenty-sixth. We would update and Councilman Blackwell, this is what you were speaking of also. We would update policies, the personnel ordinance, et cetera, to support the recommendations going forward. You will have the position amendment or ordinance that will list the positions in the pay plan. And then we'll have to do the necessary updates into our MUNIS system. And employees would receive an individual notification of this is where you are today and this is where you will be July.
Yes, sir. So, a couple of questions. The small-scale market review, obviously you wouldn't do until after that one year. That enables you by by going to the free, that you can just say if we're having pressures, say, I guess they're a utility piece. You can focus on that and because that prob, more than likely, probably a pretty good example, fluctuates more with the market because you've got not a government piece, but you also have the private industry. So, I appreciate that and thank you for, for, I think that's a good thing to separate that out and I appreciate that, thank you. And going over here to next steps, employee notice and job, job descriptions, what's a, I know because they're all watching. So, what's the ETA on, on that? Once we approve, or I assume we, the budget's approved and everything is a go, what's the ETA?
Our goal would be to give this to the employees by July. The job descriptions are being written now. That was the last phase of the classification project. And so, those are being drafted now by the consultant. So, once they finish those, we will review them and then we will do the letter for the employee on exactly what is happening with them.
But, but, so ETA on, on that, I mean, I don't want to hold you to.
July.
July, okay. Oh, okay, so just sometime in July, it might be the end of July, but it's, it's gonna be in July.
Yes, sir, I cannot tell you July sixth at four p.m., I cannot tell you that.
Well, I know there's some people out there that are gonna want to know that particular bit.
Well, it depends on, we'll try to get it done beforehand, but if not, it will be July.
Right, and, and I know this by talking with the manager, but all the, all the department heads were consulted and everybody is, is, you know, the department heads are, are, are good with how you've reclassified, especially when you, when you've gone out to three different, what, what'd you call that again?
Pay plans.
Pay, pay plans.
Yes, so I have meetings, hopefully that will be scheduled next week to meet. I've talked to each other department heads and then we'll set up meetings to go specifically through their particular department.
Okay, alright.
Yes, sir.
The three pay plans, could you slide back there, oh, there you go. The fire department personnel, they're in block number, no, they are in public.
This is fire and police.
Well, I thought you said while ago it was just.
No, when I was talking about the competitiveness of the market, those specifically with police officers.
Right, I just want to know where the fire.
Yes.
Thank you. And, and other question, a starting fireman is sixty thousand dollars once you get to that.
Police officer, sixty thousand.
Excuse me, police officers, sixty thousand, where does that reflect on that chart?
It is going to be here at three oh eight, the minimum is fifty-nine, three thirty-nine. So, the sixty thousand is.
I, I thought that was maybe, but one oh one is, and one oh two, or three oh one, or other people within.
Yes. And these are, this is sworn and fire positions, not the administrative staff. The administrative staff would be over here under the general plan.
So, thank you so much for your work. So, and, and the increases and the, you know, career ladders are great changes. But there gonna be any specific training that we're gonna have, either department manager of departments or people going through to try to help us to meet the goals and objectives that we're talking about?
Training on?
On just say, say if we give this increase and this is our outcome of work, to see what the increases.
I don't think I'm understanding what you're asking.
Can I take this?
Yes, please.
So, Councilman, I, you, you hit, you bring to an important point. The purpose of the classification and conversation plan is to really assess not only the market, but what we have. So, the new job descriptions really should be reflective of employees' existing duties and expectations. So, that's one piece, but also included in the operating budget is funding within Human Resources Department for training so that employees can receive the necessary training to progress through the career ladder. Because we have invested in adding additional steps to that. So, that's one of the things that we have assessed, even just in my independent assessment being new that has been, I won't say neglected, but we can definitely increase training opportunities across the board, even at that executive level. I think one of the things that is impactful for this conversation is that we are at the market or above the market in many of our positions, but that doesn't necessarily address your ability to get promoted. And for some positions, there is a clear succinct ladder. However, the higher that you go, it can be a little more, it can be a little less linear. So, we want to make sure that we are training folks and even have possibilities for cross-training so that you can be dangerous in more than one thing, so to speak, so that increase your opportunity. We want to retain talent citywide and if there is a place for you to get promoted outside of your traditional means, we want to capitalize on that too. So, your, your, your point is well taken and I think this is a great opportunity for the city.
Thank you.
And let me add on to that if you don't mind.
Sure.
Okay, the job descriptions are specifically from input directly from each employee. So, they had the opportunity, they had several opportunities to engage with the consultant, let them know or share their concerns, thoughts, what have you. And then also to tell the consultant or provide information of exactly what they're doing in their job. So, that is directly from them and what they're doing. The other part of this, we have implemented cornerstone learning management system. And so, right now, there is opportunity for online training. In the first year, we bought five hundred seats, so that's not every single city employee. But it's a start so that we can get, while we don't have instructor-led training right now, we've provided online training so that we'll actually end up with a blended model with instructor-led and online. So, that opportunity exists. Also, within the career ladders, and I'll take Public Works for example, they have in environmental services and actually in streets. They have laid out, here's whatever the position is, this is what you can be trained on, what you can learn to get to this next level. So, they have laid that, the specific roadmap out for each employee. If they're interested, they have to have some initiative if they're interested in pursuing promotion, moving up, et cetera. Yes, sir.
I know we're talking about budget, Mr. Manager, but this, this impacts it too. I'm just thinking about our training and feedback, you know? When, when there are employees, which I get, I hear from time to time, who've been in a place, you know? They've been in a department and a function for a number of years, ten, twenty years. And then they feel not, they feel overlooked sometimes. I don't know how frequently you hear that because somebody else has come in and they zip by them, you know? Are we able to give feedback to people so that they can understand, well, this time it was because you didn't have this or you needed to do that? And then are we able to help them build their own career potential, you know, promotion potential internally? I know it's a lot all at one time.
So, I cannot address that or say for sure across the city if that's happening. However, I do know of isolated incidents where that has happened, but I cannot say that that is always the case. But that is something that we have noted and will be looking at and how we roll out training and what types of training needs to be done. Because we're also, as the manager mentioned, looking at training for our supervisors and executives, so that would be included.
And that's in, and the budget piece that I'm asking is, do you feel like you have an adequately staffed HR department to handle all these people, management, leadership development issues? Leave the room, please. Kena, do you have what you need?
I did ask for additional positions, which are in the.
Okay.
Two positions, honestly.
It was two.
Those are tra, are they training positions or are they, okay? But they're positions that will help equip your leadership. So, you're not, your leaders are not doing mundane, not mundane, they're not doing things that other people could do, so they can do this. Okay, that's good enough.
One question.
Thank you.
I know you said you had five hundred slots, but what if you have, you know, certain departments or employees that may not feel comfortable with online training? Will HR or city manager have someone to go and actually talk with the employees who have some concerns?
So, that is what I was saying on the instructor led, what, two aspects of training, online and instructor-led. The instructor-led is I'm here in the room with you conducting the training. And so, that is what we will get to. We rolled out the online first because that was easy, you know, easier to do and training is out there. We want to get persons acclimated to online training as well. While we build up, we still have to conduct an assessment, et cetera, and all of those things to determine what types of in-person-led training that we need. However, we have also brought in some folks to do instructor-led training. So, it is happening, just not like what we would want it to once we get it built.
And then I don't care how we roll this out, what kind of study and what the study presents. We still gonna have employees who, let's say, have the living wages according to North Carolina, sixteen dollars and eighty-three cents. Still gonna feel that they deserve, you know, a higher percentage.
I'm sure that everybody in this room will feel like they deserve more than. However, the study, everyone, that's not the.
I understand, I mean, I was just saying.
And we've been communicating since we started with the bid process all the way through last week. I think Friday, we have been communicating various steps of the study as we have been going along and have also included in that communication that everyone may not realize that we increase.
And then that's where it's gonna come to, not you, but to us as elected official. And I know the reason why we did the, the big bowl that we did with the, the police, I have no problem with that. But then just sitting down, explaining it to those who feel as if, you know, even if I'm at this sixteen dollars and eighty-three cent, I still deserve, I feel worthy in my job. And it's important, you know, what about me? So, that's the kind of, the, the kind of, I don't, that, that's something that we're gonna be met with as, as, some of, at least some of us.
And, and I, and I would say to the council, I'm, as the manager, I'm sensitive to that too. Because I would, I would expect to get that, that same type of feedback. too, because I would I would expect to get that uh, that same type of feedback a- at my office. But I will say a couple of things to to provide uh some context, particularly for the council. I think number, number one, it's my expecta- well, a- as our HR director has said, I think we need to really talk about our strengths as an organization, particularly right now. Uh, our HR department has taken on this classification and compensation study, got it completed, and we have the resources to be able to implement the recommendations that our employees have put in in along with a consultant and market, so that's one. We're not at a position where we're saying we need to do some work and we can't afford it. We we are able to recommend the funding to support the recommendation within this budget. So that's, to me, that is a a benefit. Also, uh as eh uh Ms. Cofield Jones stated, the, one of the recommendations is to have ongoing reviews. So this is not one bite at the apple every ten years. This is something that we will build in to our organizational culture as well as our policy and procedure going forward to make sure that we're not only staying up with the market, but we are able to retain employees. Uh, the other strength that the city of Rocky Mount has, which is also related to this budget, is the city of Rocky Mount is really one of the few local governments that still does pay for performance. So that's one of the reasons I personally believe that we are not as in dire straits related to the market on our positions because each and every year, every employee is eligible for a four percent increase if they are a stellar performer. Now, we recognize that pay-for-performance systems are not perfect, but that's why we've also made additional investments in human resources to make sure we provide training and to make sure that we can continue to make our compensation plan the best that it can be. So I would say in a year where we are really having, starting a brand new based on employee feedback, a ba- a brand new compen- uh compensation structure for employees and funding pay-for-performance on top of it, I think FY twenty-four for the employees really is a good year. And you have my commitment going forward that each year we will review these types of things and make recommendations. And I think you can see from the slides that we've built in flexibility. I think one of the things that's important and I've been sharing as I've been going around to employees is that the leadership has to have the tools that they need to uh to not only get the best out of employees, but allow employees to to flourish within the organization. And so we believe that uh the work that has just been done is really foundational to that. And we're gonna put together uh training and programs and continue to evaluate everything so that we can make sure that Rocky Mountain is a place where employees can flourish.
So your, the the third, the last leg of that piece that you did know that that you just rolled out, words just came out your mouth, which I'm agreeing with, um, predicates itself on having a process of integrity related to evaluations, related to promotions, related to pay. And in the past, we've had, in the past, and this is all behind us. But I am saying, I'm, you know, forgetting those things which are behind, you press toward the mark, right, of the high call. So that's why I ask Ms. Cofield Jones, do you have what you need in HR? Because not only do we need to train and expose people, somebody needs to be going back and evaluating. Because I have a problem if supervisors and managers can get, you know, four percent increases. But then you look at who's underneath them and you got a whole class of folk that can't ever rise above me standing. So if I'm leading a team and I can get premium pay as a leader, but the people who follow me, that I, that my leadership is supposed to be based on, are not seeing a level of growth within their pay, my question comes, are we really evaluating the leadership in that department? And so that's why I just asked about the equity piece, because, and I'm not saying that it's widespread, I'm not saying that that's the norm. I'm just saying in a continuous improvement en- environment, you know, if you don't check it, if you don't measure it, then it probably will not happen. And I I am, I am too familiar with um certain pockets of places in anybody's organization. You know, that if it's not checked, you don't see um fairness and equity being implemented. And that's why, that's that's my, that's my perspective. So I think that what you're saying, the opportunity is great, and I'll look forward to seeing that take place. I will say though, that everything's gonna be in who's doing the checking. Once it's done, you've trained them, you know, you've made the tools available, we got a flexible process, we want to be the employer of choice, and and really, the city of Rocky Mount is the premier employer of Rocky Mount. So other workforce, other organizations should be trying to model what you're doing. And I just say it's more than where the money is, it's how you get to the money. It's those career pathways, it's making sure managers and leaders are really managing and leading and not just terrorizing and being despots and, you know, cracking whips and telling people what to do, stuff is not, it's gotta be done right.
How often are employees evaluated? Should that be reviewed and?
That would be a part of, I mentioned uh a little bit ago that we would have to look at our performance management system. So that is, we would look at that when we reevaluate that system.
I would like at some point in time down the road, the employees be evaluated at least quarterly. If they got off on the wrong foot, they have sufficient time to perhaps understand where they are and what can be done to get them back on track.
In the
I know it's a lot of work.
In in the uh performance evaluation process, so when a new employee comes on board, then the manager supervisor should be meeting with them to lay out those expectations, right? And so then there should be ongoing feedback from the manager throughout the process. So it should not be a surprise to an employee what a rating is because that feedback has been provided, that should be.
Well, we all know that sometimes feedback is not communicated well or misunderstood. But if you have written evaluations quarterly, then HR and executive management can see exactly what's going on.
Well, I I I think your point is well taken, Councilman, because I I like to think that I I'm making daily evaluations o- o- on the workforce. But I think what we're asking council, uh we're representing policy to to council and asking council to approve as a policy and give us the tools to administrate uh throughout the organization. And I think that uh we're at a great place with with the changes that we're recommending now to be able to really get to, I think really what your your point is, and so we're gonna be making sure that we really get to that place.
That's software too, isn't it? I mean, you have a performance management system.
So so uh what I would say in general is what we have now that we are trying to make sure that we can take to the next level is number one, get this new classification system in place. So that's what uh council, in addition to the funding being in the budget, council will also get an ordinance that that details what the new structure is. Also, we have funding within the operating budget for human resources to, that invest in training. And I will be working with the executive team as well as going around, continuing to go around to all of the departments to talk about philosophy and what the expectations are in terms of our workforce. I can tell you anecdotally, since I've been here, I have uh seen our performance evaluation tool and I have seen it benefit entry-level workers all the way up to our executive team. And I've been here about sixty days. So what we have is functional, it is working, there's always room for improvement. We're putting those foundational elements, or we're recommending those foundational elements uh in this budget and in the ordinance that's coming forward. And it's really on us to 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 implement and execute a program.
And I thank you for that and thank you for the training piece and um look forward to see uh people to come in on entry level because of our career ladder and up in an executive leadership place.
We got, we've got examples in this organization, so that's why I said we we need to, we need to continue, have a continuous improvement. Uh, but we've got some strengths that we we probably can do a better job of promoting and advocating for ourselves.
Highlighting internally. And celebrate that when doing, celebrate.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I got a general, couple of general questions, not not, not complaining or anything. Can I have a minute or two?
Certainly.
Sure, well, uh, I mean, we all pressed for time, but um, in, on page three dash seven of the financial policy section, there is a comment, and if you could elaborate, appropriate internal controls will be developed and maintained.
So the the policy statements are the previously adopted uh city of Rocky Mount policies. So those, that was the initial kind of policy statement, so we do have internal controls and we will continue to revise those. And particularly as it relates to financial policies, there's updates to Gatsby and other things that it makes it a continuous process, but that's why it's phrased that way.
Well, I have pointed out that special housing grants, and I know we haven't looked at any going forward. There was no internal control policies with some of the special housing pr- grant programs. And hopefully that will not be the case going forward.
Sure, sure.
And then the second question for our fellow council people. And and manager, you know what I'm getting ready to say, I think. Here we are, looking at next year's budget. We do not have a clue on where we are year-to-date on the current year budget. I've been provided a nine-month statement and I'm appreciative of that. But going forward, and I've had a call with Mayor Protem, we need to have a regular scheduled time, maybe not on each COW. But we need to know month to month how we are compared to budget year-to-date. Not what the budget is for the twelve months, but we need to see actual results compared to actual budgeted dollars. And that's all I say, but it just amazes me, we had had a discussion on twenty-three year-to-date operations, and we were talking about twenty-four. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Kena Cofield Jones for your report. And thank you to uh everyone for your comments and questions. Uh, Mr. Manager, did you have anyone else that needed to present at this time?
Uh, no, sir.
If there are no other questions, I I just received an email back from our executive director of the league, Ms. Rose One Williams, and I asked her for some information from City Vision that uh obtained a a forum regarding air properties. And so for any council members that uh want more information about this, I want to, I have this group to come to Rocky Mountain and talk to our constituents that are having issues with air properties as we're looking at our housing development plan. But uh she finally sent me over an email today as I was leaving out, and so I wanted, I I forward it to you, Mr. Manager. So I wanted to just let the rest of council know, um and as we're moving forward, I'm hoping to have them in Rocky Mountain soon so that they could just present to our constituents some pertinent information in regards to air property and how they can resolve some of the issues. If there are no other questions uh or comments from anyone at the time, I can see, but uh it's probably best if y'all all of me just say, but if there are no other questions or comments at the time, uh this adjourns our meeting today.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.
Our next meeting?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
I will, I will not be here.
Next Thursday, not next Wednesday.
Celebration of your special one, sir.
Thursday.
Congratulations.
Is it Wednesday or Thursday?
Wednesday or Thursday.
Thursday.
That's right. It's Thursday.